Okay, it is 7:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Erin, would you mind doing your call?
Sure. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember DeYoung.
Present.
Councilmember Kinser.
Present.
Councilmember Cornigay.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Councilmember Couch.
Here.
All right, so I am looking now for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now for the consent agenda, looking for approval, items one through four.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, items one through four.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch and seconded by Councilwoman Kelly. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have no special gifts, so we'll move right into staff reports. Chief Tucker.
Chief Tucker will get more.
Oh, absolutely. Chief Klinger.
Yeah, everybody got a chance to see the new vehicle that's out there. It's a little short, about a week or two before we can actually put it in service. There's still some items that Kubota has to install in that, and that was purchased out here by Cook and I-5 through the Kubota dealer here. We did actually get to finish our hose test this week. I was telling you that it got delayed. They did actually show up and completed it finally. And in about two weeks, we'll be sending the trucks out for their pump test. So it's just our big maintenance period right now, so that's all we have.
Well, I can tell you, it rides nice.
Hey, Dean?
Yes?
What will be the primary purpose of it?
The primary purpose of it is going to be for use up there in the Northern State areas for on-the-trail systems. We'll actually also be utilizing it all through the fall here at the high school for the football game, since it's okay to drive that directly onto the field, so we can go onto the field to the patient that we're dealing with instead of having to walk and carry all the gear out there. We can take it with us out there to them, and if they need an ambulance, they'll call them, because usually those kids are pretty tough. None of them want to go in an ambulance, so they all want to just shake it and walk it off. So we get out there, and if we see that when it's necessary, it's got the radio in, and we can call for one.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Chief Klinger.
Yes. That was all paid for by the port, right?
Correct. That was all paid for by the port through the project up here in Northern State.
Awesome.
Fantastic. Okay. Chief Tucker.
So we didn't get anything as cool as Dean got as a gator, but we did get some cool night vision out of that. Our portion was a thermal camera monocular that Sergeant Harris has for doing surveillance whenever we're doing drug buys and stuff like that or looking for bad guys in the dark. My goal is to go ride around with Dean at night up at the Northern State grounds and look for things in the dark. That would be cool. This last week, we had oral boards for officer positions. Officer Wilson went to our testing site down in Linwood and did some personal recruiting down there and pretty much doubled our pool of candidates by just going down there and inviting them up there. A lot of them didn't even know where Cedro Woolley was. So we got several -- we got a good look at a bunch of little baby police officer potentials. It wasn't a great look, but it was better than we've had in the past. Out of this group, we've probably got four or five potential candidates out of this and one definite one, so getting out of the Marines, and he's looking like a really good option for us. So we're waiting for him to get out next week and come see us. And it'd be kind of nice if he got out of the Marines and then moved right into a job with the Police Department, but that's our goal. We, in addition to our night vision that we got, we used a military surplus program to get some additional night vision cameras from Yakima County. They had six $17,000 night vision cameras that they never used, were sitting on a shelf. They had no use form. Jason Harris is on the program that can get that stuff. Got ahold of somebody there. I think he met them at the Pass on I-90 and made the exchange, and some of them had never even been out of the case yet. So we've -- Jared knows about it for his crew up at the Upper Skagit, and we can farm those out to our night shift people for any sort of looking for bad guys at night. And we did a threat -- an active threat survival class after the El Paso and Dayton shootings. Right here, we had probably 40 or 50 people. What we're finding is, when we have a tragedy like that, it's kind of handy to just get some information out to people. It was really just some tips to help increase your odds if you're stuck in a place that bad things are happening. But we had a really good crowd and had a lot of good questions and good conversation. And Sergeant Eaton and Officer Carroll did an outstanding job of putting it together. And finally, let's see. Oh, we received a grant from the Traffic Safety Commission for a new radar unit. The radar units that we've got, we don't have enough for all the cars for dash mount units, so we're kind of adding those as we can. WASPIC puts out a traffic safety grant at least once or twice a year, and if you're fast and apply quick, you get on top of the list and they pretty much give it to you. So we ordered it, and probably a week later, we got it. It was almost like ordering from Amazon. And we'll have it in service. And Carl, I know you're going to ask, but we had to delay on the big reader board, one that we've got sitting in my office. But we're waiting for our two new cars to come in, and as soon as they come in, we're going to pull one of the old Crown Vics out of service. We're going to mount that on the trunk of the Crown Vic or on a bumper or on a hitch, something like that, whatever Glenn can come up with. And then we'll be able to park a marked police car in different parts of town with a big radar unit on the back of it. And if I remember correctly, that one has data gathering information on it, too. And I'll talk to Mark about having that kind of data available, just to see what kind of numbers and what kind of traffic things. Like you all have heard many times from audience and from your constituents, traffic is our biggest complaint. And one last thing, I almost forgot it. Did anybody talk to you about our recovered human remains out at the cemetery? I guess we haven't. While digging a grave out there, one of the city workers dumps his bucket of sandy soil in the trailer and a skull rolls out. And there shouldn't have been one there, but what we have found is they've been burying folks out in the cemetery area for probably 100 years. And Erin had a good connection with the Department of Historical Preservation. Their first thought was to make sure it wasn't native, in case we had disturbed a burial site. We did disturb a burial site, but it wasn't native. And we had a team from the Department of Historical Preservation come up, and they had these cool sand shaker things and recovered a few more remains. They're going down to analyze them to make sure that we didn't get any other intermixed remains. And then as soon as they get done analyzing them, it looks like it's anywhere from 50 to 100 years old. And we're going to reenter those back in the spot. The person who was supposed to go there, his wife kindly said, "We're okay with moving over a space or two," because that spot was occupied at the cemetery, as Rick Limley so glibly said. And I thought it was like, "Oh, my God, we're telling this lady her spot's occupied." But it worked out fine, and we had some really good education. Our detectives went out and helped go sifting through that in case we ever have to do that again for anything. And we've got a little bit of training under our belts now. But it was kind of an interesting case. We roll up on the scene, and there is a well-preserved portion of a skull sitting on top of the trailer full of dirt out of the cemetery. So you never can tell what kind of weird things we're going to run into. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Coleman?
I have a question for Chief.
Okay.
All right, thanks. I just wanted to thank you for putting on the active shooter. I participated with that. A lot of great feedback from the folks in the room. Always conducted with professionalism and great life lessons. There's a second one I've attended, and it was a great refresher, and also I learned some more things. Really appreciated going over the three Ds. And it helps, as you say, prepare the mind, get the mind right. So really appreciated that for the community. Also wanted to thank the Police Department for the emphasis patrol on State Street on Saturday, the 17th, and being able to stop and ticket the person doing three times the speed limit on State Street. It was doing 75 miles an hour. So thank you for that. And that was well-appreciated by the neighbors, especially the neighbors with children on State Street. Thanks, Chief.
I'd like to say I was involved in that traffic emphasis, but I was monitoring Councilman Couch on Bourbon Street in New Orleans that night, and it was a full-time job for me that night. I was busy.
All right. Mr. Coleman?
All right. So as you probably don't recall, back in March of last year, we completed our local update of census address operation, which was a review of every address in Cedro Woolley using geographic information systems to look at the location of every residence that the Census Bureau knew that there was an address, and then we added them and corrected them and submitted it to them. And now they've submitted their materials back, and we have 45 days to make corrections to what they've sent back to us. And I'm just looking through this. It looks like there might be a few things for us to really go over. So, you know, what this is a sign of is that the census is coming, so you've probably seen some census people around already. And so we're gearing up for helping with that, because the Planning Department's always involved in that process in one way or another. And I think that's all I got for you tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Feiburger?
A couple of things. Just for the record, there was an error made in the posting of supplement number one on the consent calendar. It was a double-sided original submitted, and it got copied single side, so it missed every other page. The corrected version is on your DS. If anybody does have any questions on that, you have approved it, but just for the record. Secondly, I wanted to let you know that the next council meeting, I will be gone, but we will have on the agenda, hopefully, a couple of items. The possible award of the Borseth Robinson Sewer Project, which the bid's closed tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. The memo has been written, and David Lee will complete that and submit that for your consideration. We want to get that going as it's getting late in the year, and we want to start that project, you know, about the 1st of October. That extends sewer. This is the follow-up on the project we did on Wes Nelson and Wes Bennett and Beatty last year, and we'll complete that project. Also, you approved tonight the complete street sidewalk change order number one, and just to let you know, we were able -- it did come in under estimate, and we were to negotiate with the contractor using existing unit prices to add some additional sidewalk replacement down by the Auto Parts Place on Murdoch Street, some very bad sections there, which were in the original scope, but we cut due to concerns when David did his engineer's estimate. And we also added a handicap ramp at the Legion office, which was discussed and requested last week. And so those things have been incorporated in the project. Contractor's doing really well. They've actually finished the basic work on down in this high school area, which is just in time for school to open next week. They have to put the truncated domes on yet. That goes on as an applique, in this case, for this project, and they'll complete that, hopefully, tomorrow. Beyond that, Nathan Cruz, working with the county, completed the chip seal project. You probably noticed that around town. Looks good. Had an excellent day for it. They will come back and fog seal that, which is an asphalt coating on that, and make it look like an asphalt pavement when it's done. That'll happen sometime in the next two weeks, depending on the county's schedule and the weather. And we got the last of the BNSF tracks removed today. We had got removed last week, the crossing at Puget and Murdoch, and today, they completed pulling the tracks east of Township, and so all of those are gone now. And we understand that BNSF is going to come back in in the next couple of weeks and remove the track between State and Ferry. And so that's going to greatly clean up the town for those things which we've been dealing with forever, since the city was founded. One other thing you will have on the council approval list for the 11th is the award of the design contract for the SR-9, SR-20 Township Intersection Improvements Project. Our consultant selection committee has selected Transportation Solutions, Inc. to do the design work for that. And I haven't seen their price yet. They do know what the limit is, though, because they were the contractor who originally did the estimate for that. So we anticipate they're going to come in at estimate or pretty close to that. So I've got that ready to come in to you as well on the 11th. And beyond that, we also have reviewed the first rounds of the wastewater treatment plan, electrical upgrade specs and the digester upgrade specs. And I expect we'll have bid specs to advertise for those yet this fall for both of those projects. We have some budget left to do those projects, and we'll see what happens when we get the engineer's estimates for those. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burke?
Mayor Johnson, I have one question.
Yes, all right.
Highway 20 and 9, is that on the west end of town or the east end of town?
That's the signalized intersection at Highway 20 and Township and Highway 20 there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Burke?
You probably noticed the library project has started in earnest with the contractor mowed up, and they've been putting in underground utilities. Everything's going according to plan. We continue to be on schedule and on budget. I've got a number of items that are pending as we kind of wrap up summer and move into fall, and I thought I'd just kind of alert you to these items. I've got two agreements I'm working on with the Upper Skagit Indian Tribe, specifically relating to law enforcement cooperation. One would be a mutual aid agreement, just allowing the two departments to work more closely together in a more formal fashion. The second deals with radio infrastructure. The Upper Skagit PD is having difficulty right now getting clear communications between their radios and dispatch, a problem that we know all too well here in Cedro Woolley from a few years ago. One of the solutions would be for them to co-locate with us at our tower site and within our building, a separate repeater. So I'm working on, as the pieces come together, I'll be working on a lease agreement or some other type of agreement to essentially lease them rack space in our building, so they would be able to locate an antenna and repeater system at our site. That one's kind of time-sensitive, but we're not the first step in the process. There are other parties that need to kind of get that ball rolling, and then we can take it from there. So that'll be coming up in the not-too-distant future, hopefully sooner rather than later. Cedro Woolley Proposition 1, we'll have that on your agenda at some point here in the not-too-distant future for an endorsement conversation, so a public hearing and process to allow all those who are for and against to talk to you about it and potentially to allow the council to formally endorse it. Got two kind of code updates I'm working on. Not sure about the timing. One is a comprehensive update of our purchasing policies. The other is a more minor update to our Public Records Act, addressing some fees that are newly authorized. Also, working on a potential shift with Helping Hands Food Bank to their agreement, and this is something that we'll need to get some direction from the council on. The concept would be to take the existing lease with purchase option and reduce the current five-acre footprint to about four acres and lease the food bank four acres that does not include the Riggles family home, garage, or shop. Retain that as city, and then lease the remaining four acres to the food bank for a 50-year no-fee lease. So our internal loan recovery would come through the rental and ultimate sale of the Riggles house once that property's annexed into the city and can be subdivided. So the concept is really one of maintaining a long-term kind of public-private partnership between the city and the food bank. It really ties the community to that for a long, long time. But also, when we first imagined this, I don't know how long ago that was, you know, Rick Judd and I, Rick Judd was president at the time, imagined the Riggles' house being a teaching kitchen. But we also imagined the food bank would be a pole building. And so with the new food bank built as it is, that house is somewhat superfluous to their needs, and if they wanted to put a teaching kitchen, it makes a lot more sense for them to put it in their super-fancy building rather than in an older house next door. So we probably would have drawn the lines differently had we imagined the food bank to be what it is today. So it's really a way for the food bank to, as I understand it, this is their only debt, so it would eliminate their debt. They'd become a debt-free nonprofit with permanence in their home. They would, of course, own their building and have a no-fee 50-year lease, and the city would then be able to move forward with, you know, renting and then ultimately selling that house to recover our dollars. So I guess if you've got any feedback now, if there are concerns, let me know. My intention would be to work on a document to bring back to you, but certainly, if I'm seeing shaking heads, I'd want to talk about it before getting too far down the path.
Questions? Yes, Brendan?
Erin, at one time, I had heard that there had been some discussion about having voluntary medical care coming in and providing medical care on a maybe once a month or something basis for those in need of medical or dental. Is that still in any type of discussion?
I don't know.
Going to the Riggles home?
I don't know about, I don't believe that's in discussion for the Riggles home. I did meet with the museum board, or at least a group of the board members, and with the executive director, and I think the view is the home's not necessary, but Councilmember DeYoung is on the board and may be able to answer that question more directly about the medical piece.
I'd be happy to, thank you. It's a great question, because at one point, we did have a dentist that was interested in doing dental care out of the house. And we've moved from that idea. And it's still a solution center, and it's something that we could work with. It's my understanding from our board discussions that are public is that we'd probably move that, as Erin said, within the boundaries of the established barn.
Okay. Anyone else?
It sounds like you're comfortable with me moving this to the next phase of drafting a document for council review. Okay? So my next item, then, is you all saw Cedroley Fire Department 55 mini out front. We are navigating the legalities and technicalities of driving it on the roads within the city, which potentially opens a bigger question for the council. So my intention would be to bring to your meeting, possibly even your next meeting, an ordinance that would specifically authorize the fire department and law enforcement use of what are now called not ORVs, but WATVs, wield all-terrain vehicles on the city streets. And it appears to me, under state law, we can operate them on the State Highway 20 within the city limits as well, as long as the speed limit's lower than 35. So there's a couple of segments where it could operate there. Question, of course, for the council is, you know, we'll see Dean driving around with a big smile on his face, and we'll go home and hop on our little gators and wonder why we can't also do the same. So the question for the council is, do you want to entertain the discussion of opening WATV access to city roads or not?
I think we kind of have to, don't we?
If I may. I had a meeting with some farmers a few months back that asked why they can't use some of these, it's the new farm truck, right? And they'd like to use it to pilot and follow their implements equipment through town. And I know you and I had gone over the ordinance a little bit on that. So that's where I would head, is make that available to allow, you know, the next generation of farm truck to help out the agricultural industry around us, so they can move freely with their equipment through town.
I'll take a closer look at that. I think under our current code, okay, I guess farm tractors, farm implements are exempt, so I have to look closer. If they're actually using it as a farm vehicle and they're using a motor vehicle, fuel tax exemption, so they're using die diesel, for example, then I believe they are currently exempt. So a little bit of research would have to be known to make that clear.
They were looking for a lot of clarity on it, because they didn't want to take up the time of our law enforcement when they're going through town.
Right, right, no.
Councilwoman Kelly?
Under the licensing laws, you can have farm-exempt vehicles, and they, it's a matter of mileage, too. How many miles is it being driven? So that's something you might ask Paula Johnson, our licensing supervisor, about, because she's very familiar with those rules and what it takes to qualify, and that might be a way to go about it, so that we're limiting use but not disallowing use.
Okay, yes. Councilman Couch?
I think we should absolutely look at it. I know other jurisdictions within the county have done it and I think had some success with the use of WATVs or UTVs. And, you know, as long as they meet the licensing requirement to get an on-road vehicle plate, I think that it would be a great idea. And, you know, people, the only argument I've ever heard is, well, they're, you know, they're ATVs, and people think, you know, four-wheelers running all over town, and it's a little bit different. You know, it's a licensed, street-legal vehicle that has to abide by the same laws as any other vehicle. So it would definitely be something worth looking at.
All right. Any other comments?
Can I get a gator, too?
You should have put it in your seat for comments.
You get for the use of it.
Any other questions or comments?
All right. Then my last item, then, is I think at the last meeting, I let you know we were working on an MOU with the Guild for some shared sick leave. Tonight, we've got the similar scenario, but this time with AFSMI. So it's our intent to execute an MOU with AFSMI for shared sick leave with one of our employees who's going to be off to take care of a kid. So any questions, for sure, let me know, but that's our plan. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Merriman?
I just have one item. At your locations, I did put a copy of our 2020 budget calendar, and it has the three different things, the budget, the lodging tax process, and then also, we'll be looking at property taxes and that this year. So just keep this in your files. We'll be referring back to this over the next few months as we start getting more and more into the budget. We'll be issuing out our official budget call shortly here and sending out information to the departments for them to start preparing their budgets. So off we go. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilman Couch?
Just one quick thing. I want to thank Mark and Nathan and the crew for the resurfacing that's happening on Orthway. A lot of my neighbors are extremely happy. The road was getting pretty weathered. And just on a personal note, I want to thank Chief Tucker for bringing me back to the council in one piece after dragging me around the South.
All right, thank you. Councilman Owen?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilwoman Cornigay?
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Labor Day and happy and safe, and enjoy your camping or whatever you got planned. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kinser?
Just want to let everybody know that we're probably going to have a work party, volunteer work party, up at the Northern State Hospital Cemetery sometime in the next six weeks. I haven't pinpointed the date yet, but now, instead of waiting for the ground to firm up, we need to wait for it to soften up a little bit. So want to wait for a couple rains, and then we'll get that scheduled. So if anybody is interested in uncovering some grave markers for the winter, let me know.
All right, thank you. Councilman DeYoung?
Yes, I just wanted to alert folks that the Planning Commission is still moving forward on the ADUs. Been happy to participate as a member in the audience with that and just watch the process of making the sausage, if you will. It's very granular, very detailed, and some great questions and some innovative solutions coming our way. I really appreciate the work that the Planning Department put into making a rather extensive spreadsheet from what different localities around the state are doing. So I just wanted to say thank you for all that hard work. So I just wanted to say thank you for all that hard work. Additionally, met with the Census, private contractor, and with the Census Bureau contacted me, spent a couple hours last week talking about why it's important to have an accurate count here in Cedar Wully, because so much depends on that for grants and also for services for folks who live here. And so just was wondering if we'd be able to put a kiosk out in the city hall or in the library as a way for folks, for the public, to interact and be aware of the Census is happening. It's something that they recommend. Also, they're encouraging us to use social media to promote Census and to alert folks that people will be coming to their doors. And anything that we can do to help promote it publicly would be appreciated. Additionally, saw in 1406 world that Anna Cordis went ahead and is putting something on the ballot for their citizens. And I'm just looking forward to some sort of report out or briefing coming up about 1406. And my goal is to head to some sort of regional inter-local agreement to see how those tax funds could be helpful to our folks who live here in Cedar Wully. I had a question about noise disturbance ordinance. Maybe that's to Erin. I was reading that if someone is mowing their lawn, they have until about 9:00 PM to turn that off, right? And then at 9:01, it becomes a code enforcement. What does that have to do with music and dogs? Is there, can, is that 24 hours you can call that in, or is it before 8:00, after 9:00? Because I tried to look at those two paragraphs, and it seems silent to me on that, which inferred to me that if a dog is howling or we have loud music at noon, that's something someone could make a complaint about.
I thought it was 10 minutes, right? At least for dogs, like if it's, they're barking for 10 minutes straight? Like during the day?
I'm looking at it. I actually think, I think dogs may be in a different section than 9.46, which is the public disturbance, noise section. But I think there's a separate section that deals with barking dogs. So the question about music is, could somebody complain at any time of the day?
Right. Yes. Thank you. And then dogs?
Dogs, repetitive, ongoing. It's got, you know, reasonable and necessary enforcement.
Okay. Cool. And then, let's see, the planning commission. Today was Northwest Workforce Council's quarterly meeting, also used to be known as the Private Industry Council. We had a fantastic presentation by an economist professor from Bellingham, Western Washington, talking about the local impacts of refinery workers. And they got pretty localized here to Cedar Wully as well, about the economic impact and, if you will, for every refinery worker, how many other jobs that impacts or creates in our region. And it was a fantastic presentation, and hope to see maybe something here in Cedar Wully with that. And then finally, as was mentioned earlier, it is the 125th anniversary of Labor Day, and would encourage folks to take a moment to understand that, you know, and thank a worker that could be yourself, and to take a moment of relaxation on Labor Day. There will be a picnic that I'll be attending, and it should be a good, good day for labor. Thank you.
All right. To answer your question regarding House Bill 1406 on 9/11, we are going to have Kayla Scott here, and she'll be talking about it, doing a presentation.
September 11?
Yes. Yeah. Councilwoman Dunn?
No, I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Kelly?
Hi. I had a couple of things. A reminder that school starts on Tuesday, and so there's going to be a lot of little ones out and a lot more traffic on the roads around the schools, so beware. We will be having our annual Halloween thing in October, and I know this is primarily directed for Chief Tucker, because he's such a great leader of the parade down there from Wells Fargo. I haven't seen him out actually trick-or-treating, but...
I have my dead school master's on last year.
Ah-huh. Pretty sneaky. Anyway, and Christmas will be coming up after that, and we're already working on it, because one of our traditional supporters has been United General Hospital District 304. And in order for them to provide any funds towards this, they needed it to have a health aspect to it. So we're doing an ugly sweater dash at 2:00 PM. So we'll be wanting to close the street a little earlier than usual, and to come up with a very short but efficient path. And so any help you guys can provide me on that, because I know when we've done the Blast from the Past color run, there's been some comments about where it's went and how it's gone. And so I'm open to suggestions there. Sean Van Tassel from the Walking 20 Group, Running 20?
West 20.
West 20 Running Club is kind of in charge of that part of the event. And he is also a cross-country coach at the high school. So we're assuming we're going to start at the high school and then come north from there. Hopefully, we can get The Grinch dressed up in time to participate. And so that was, oh, and as far as the census goes, we will have a short speech on it on our luncheon next week. He's got about five minutes just to kind of tell us what's going on. But I worked on the census in 1970 and 1980, and this one is going to be quite a bit different. For one thing, the primary goal will be get everybody to do it online. And that's where Carl's suggestion that we have someplace where people who don't have access to the Internet could go, makes good sense to me. The other thing is, is that it will be a third go-around before anybody goes out to your house. So you'll be given, like, lots of opportunities to get that done before somebody comes to your house. And having done that census door-to-door in the Day Creek area before, I can assure you that when somebody told me, "You better get off my property," I did. So be respectful. These guys are just temporary labor force, and they're not, they're not out to find out all your secrets for the government. Just enough that we can get our representatives in Congress. So that's all I have.
Okay. Is there a possibility that the library could also be contacted, and something set up there for people to go in and fill out their census?
I'm sure Jeanne, Jeanne Williams would be happy to help us with that. I even am talking to Ray and was thinking about how we might set up a station in the Chamber of Commerce.
Nice. All right. Thank you. Okay. And I do not have anything to report, so we will move on to public comments. It is 7:38. Public comment is open. Yes, Matthew? Please state your full name and address.
Matthew DeBois, 722 Cathy Pop Court, Cedar Wully. Thank you for letting me speak. About a week and a half ago, I told Councilman DeJudd what I wanted to say, and he recommended I write a letter to the council. So I did. So I just read the letter. Dear Cedar Wully City Council, I wish you a fortunate that I have been elected as the Downtown Association's senior and treasurer, deserving treasurer and of the association. By my conversation with E. Lawson, as the director of the association, one of my responsibilities in the city for reimbursing my expenses incurred by the association members and boards. My understanding is in the past, due to lack of involvement in managing the finances of the association, Mr. Lawson has been billing the city for reimbursement of his own expenses. We believe that by having active and dedicated credit for the association, who did not reimburse the city for his own personal expenses, but rather on behalf of the association member and board, providing more sound internal controls and association duties, and decreasing its burden to Mr. Lawson and other members. As a result, please be expected in voices from me in the months ahead for reimbursing my expenses incurred by the association. Thank you for your time and attention to this letter. Senator DeBois. Councilman DeJudd asked me to give this letter to Mr. Brew. I don't see Mr. Brew here, so it's simply not I can give this letter.
You can give the letter to me, and I'll make sure that it gets into the minutes. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Give it now?
Sure. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate it. Yep. Okay. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, it is 7:42. I will close public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business. And Mr. Coleman, you were up.
Well, thank you. So tonight, we have a second read on what are calling the impacts of easements on billable lot areas of new lots. I gave a presentation on this last time, as well as showed a diagram explaining what the code changes are intended to address. If there's any further questions after last, last council discussion, please let me know.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this under the second reading of this ordinance.
All right.
Is it 10:34?
The ordinance, 1936.
It's 1936-19.
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kelly, seconded by Councilman Couch. The motion to adopt ordinance 1936-19 is an ordinance amending Chapter 17.04 of the Cedar Wully Municipal Code, specify that transmission line easements and egress. And egress easements may not count towards lot area or lot width at building line. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. And that is it. We have nothing else on the agenda, unless there's anything for the good of the order. We are adjourned.